All right, we're about to leave the meeting in order. Scan the horizon for those of you that are looking at us and you're coming with us this evening in Clock Five for the map. We've been this useful for our discussions last week or two. We will continue to be responsible in regards to how we meet for as long as necessary. I appreciate your indulgence. Having called to this meeting to work, this is a regularly scheduled Career Services Council meeting called to meet this evening, May the 26th, 2020. With that, I would like to ask Councilor Judy Howard, if she would, to lead us to the budget completions and a implication for Council following the back. Please rise if you'd like to.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General, I would thank you for the meetings and send you to the one that's set for each hour. We pray that you'll be with us through this evening, that you'll be with us as we go through this council meeting. And you know where I'm just trying to coordinate right now in this time of unusual circumstances, pandemic and everything through. I pray that you will honor the leaders and that they will come to understand your leadership and you should say you do pray.
Just not to hear them from the chair in front of the floor on the seat.
No, sir.
With that, then, count the minutes of the council meeting from May the 12th. 12 has executive session on May the 19th. They don't have minutes other than the common.
That's it.
But they are there for your approval of meeting items, a note for either minutes from May the 12th or a special session on the 19th. There's a person that's left to deal with individually on the front campus.
So I'm moving on my way forward.
Sir.
I have a motion in second. Any items, none to the clerk? Your name is Duncan.
Mr. Arrowwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Gublitz?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Interpretable motion received. Minutes from the 19th.
Sir.
Have a motion, second. Any items, none to the clerk? Your name is Duncan.
Mr. Arrowwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Gublitz?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council Department report will include the compact this evening. Department head, Mr. Greer, will play the decision. Those are all of us this evening for our financial report.
Thank you.
Our board of commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I'm pleased to present the financial report as of April 2020. Before I get started, I would like to point out that we've made a change in the presentation of the report just for the general fund only, that we have made it where it's just reflecting operational expenses only. And we've taken out the transfers that were the approved but unbudgeted transfer for downtown construction projects. So that's just a little change. That's a change in the quick look indicators and it's also a change on the dashboard. So just keeping that in mind as we start with our general fund. The year-to-date revenue for the general fund is $24,287,000. The expenses are $21,662,000, which is 7% under budget. Now, if you look at our dashboards, you'll see that where we compare actuals to benchmark, that we also have a positive variance of $1,740,000. The cash balance is $16,296,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,982,000, which is 3% over budget still. The expenditures are $2,155,000 and the cash balance is $1,046,000. Lastly, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,044,000. The expenses are $959,000 and the cash balance is $1,146,000. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Council question.
On the hospitality, where are we on expenditures as far as year-to-date?
Year-to-date, we're at $2.1 million.
Yeah, percentage of.
Yes. Yes, let me look at that. Just a second. We should be at 17% and we're at 16%, so we're right at where we should be for this time.
Expenditure.
Yes, yes, yes.
Other reports. Council.
Don't.
Good job. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Joining us is the G.I.S. President. Demonstration of beauty. She is helping us with our census activity. I said helping, because she is guiding us through our census activities. And she is willing to be expected to do many things.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm here tonight to talk about a code violations dashboard that I've created. So it is going to be a tool that I'll show up in just a second, but it'll be available on our website. It'll be a webpage that citizens, all of you and our city staff can access. And they'll be able to look at all of the open code violation cases per month and analyze it. And I'm sure as you heard in the past year or two, you've heard a lot about TrackIt. So one really great thing about TrackIt that we've made that investment is it's a great data management tool. So I'm able to pull out a lot more data than I could in our old system. And I'm able to display it in a way that it's useful for citizens and for all of you. So that's what I've done. I've been able to pull out the code violation cases and put it into this dashboard. So as you can see right here where it says open violations, this is how many code violation cases that are still open and have not been closed as of April 30th. So I update this at the end of every month. So if you check back in a week, this number will be a little different because the cases that were closed in May will drop off of this map. And the code cases that were opened during May and remain opened at the end of May will appear. So each of these dots in the map are a different code violation case. And the different colors coordinate to the seven different violation types that we take it for, which include building violations, derelict vehicles, overgrown grass, property violations, trash and debris, and zoning violations. And if you look at this bar chart down here, you can see the distribution of the code violation cases that we currently have opened. So the one we have most open are for the trash, junk, and debris. And you can see if you hover over it, there are 31 cases open for that. And you can also click on one of these bars and it'll tell you how many cases there are in that particular type. And also it'll filter the map if you just wanted to focus in on that one code type. And you can also filter it over here on the left. This is just another way of doing it. So for example, if you were interested in code violations and overgrown grass, you could click on that and it'll tell you how many open violations there are in those categories. And then again, it'll filter the map to show just those code violations. And if you unclick them, it shows all of them. You can also filter by the month. So if you just leave it year-to-date, it's everything that's currently open. But if you wanted to look at, let's say, March, you wanted to see what cases were still open from March, you'll see that there are a lot of vehicle code violations that are still open that have yet to be closed. In comparison, if you look at April, you'll see that the overgrown grass cases have increased. So as we get into spring, of course, you'll see more of those overgrown grass cases. And just like any of our other maps, the map is interactive. You can move around, you can zoom in, get more information. You can click on an actual code case and it'll bring up again the case type or subtype. And this little piece right here says for a description of the different code violations, click here. If you click on that link, it brings up a document that describes the different code violation types. So if someone is curious, oh, I don't know what constitutes a building violation, they can go right here and it describes, you know, what they're responsible for and what they need to, if they went out to meet these, they would get a violation for that. And we did, Ruthie and I had a meeting with our lawyer and we showed him this and the information that comes up when you click on it. And he approved for us that this is all public information. This is nothing that's private. It's all publicly available. So in a matter of being transparent as a city, this is something that we can share with our citizens. And it's nothing, you know, that's exposing information that they shouldn't get their hands on. And something else that's useful that you can do in the upper right-hand corner of this map, there's this little icon that looks like a stack of paper, but some more layers you can click on. And you can turn on something like the career subdivisions. So this will be particularly useful for our staff, especially Kate, our new neighborhood services coordinator. And that way you can turn on the neighborhoods and you can see what type of code violations are occurring in different areas. So if a particular area seems to be struggling with a certain code violation, we can take a look at that and provide that community maybe with some more support. Or we can just use that to help us make some more decisions about what's going on in the area and how we can be proactive in preventing some of these code violations. And something that I think all of you as city councilmen will find useful, if you turn on the city council districts, you can look at what code violations are in your particular district. And you can look at what different types there are and where they're located. So if you're getting particular complaints from citizens in your area or if you just want to take a look at what's happening in your area, you can turn on that layer and look at that information. So overall, this is a tool that I again have used because we now have a better data management tool. I'm able to pull in the data that our code enforcement violation officers are putting into our system every day. I'm able to map that here and we can provide our city staff with better tools to make decisions and also keep our citizens more informed. And this is for the code violations, but I'm hoping to do something like, something similar to this with our permits as well. Now that we have that data, I'm going to do something similar. So with that, I'm happy to take any feedback that you may have about this before we make it go live or answer any questions.
Council? When does it go live?
We haven't set a date yet.
For the, when you click on a particular case?
Yes, sir.
Would, I would see. Don't you back our case status and see that it's in progress? Will there be more of a description? Where I want with it is that get calls on occasions where, well, you guys came to help because so-and-so's make yard, you know, needed to be cut. It hasn't been cut, why not? And if we look at that or have them go to it, see, well, it's about a, whatever, whatever the status is, because a lot of times people will just let it ride, go to court. Will anything like that be indicated on the layer for the status?
I have to look more at it. I have to look at what's available in TrackIt that I'm able to put into here. I don't know if we have detail about it. I think we have some detail about second inspection, but it won't be quite as detailed, I think, as what you're talking about.
Where are the websites?
It'll be, I believe, with the code enforcement area.
Right at the back, so we'll have to save it. We have a decent, we've got a lot of our technology, not everyone, but the service that you've provided out, if you've continued in here, Adam, and that, several years ago. We certainly appreciate you for all of your ability and after all.
So I had, one of the things that we found critically important is, it's one thing to have enough, but it's how we use, what do you do with the data that you're collecting? What might have been able to really expand for us is the ability for us to drill more closer to activity than we had, we had clusters. Some of these things were kind of intuitive for us, we know where some of our problems are. But as an example, now that we're able to move forward, again, I'm touching on this in our introductory comments, as we move forward in our neighborhood services program, one of the things that we often hear is, well, I got cited for X and you're not doing anything else in my neighborhood. We very, very quickly can use a tool like this to demonstrate where activity has indeed been taking place, what's the status of that activity, how long it's been going on, what are the different levels or different types of activity we've had in those as well. As we continue to gather information, not only about our code enforcement side of things, but these tools will be available for our citizens as they start to look at development around their neighborhood. So that they see a neighborhood that's coming out of the ground. They will know more about how many units, how many residential units are going to be there, how many houses will be in that neighborhood, where were plans reviewed, what was the, just the information about this. We have all that information. We now have the ability to have that information shared with our public and so that they can have access to it. To be better than if one, but also gives us additional tools from a static perspective on how we can provide higher levels of service in those respective communities as well. So it's building on, this building blocks of TrackIt, which is a large investment for us. We're now being able to re-identify that, now that that system is up and running and collecting data for us. And of course, that data doesn't go away as we go farther down the road. We're able to start seeing, we can start seeing if a neighborhood is in decline or if we can see that a neighborhood is coming out of a decline. And so we can start seeing the trends that are happening within our community as well. And we can allocate resources where we see those things, where those needs are.
Can you add the layer where, and I'm, I do not know that it's on our website, but where the police department, they have there, something, right, like the Doppler radar.
So we have, I did look at that and Kate's going to actually pull that up for you in a minute. It's not something that I can have on here permanently. Well, maybe we could. I'm not sure what, we'd have to talk about if that's something that we can display to the public or not. I think they.
Do you want to say other issues with police staff?
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that it don't make any jeopardize our investigation, those types of things.
But we could see if you, how, if there's any correlation between crime and the other kinds of violence.
Right, yes. And that is.
It's like if you, this is, they, they track shots heard or shot fired or something and, and, and point hostiles. And I think we all must do the same thing here. Visually, you can see the clusters of where they are. But if we get to a point sometime future where we can be more proactive and reactive about violations, I think we're going to be able to use that information there.
And that data is, listen, and that data is available to us. A client analyst uses that on a regular basis. She's had many presentations on that. I think the difference for us is that which we would make publicly available and then that which we're using as a tool. This, we know that we can make that publicly available. We would just want to be careful on the east side to make sure that if we do make it publicly available, that we are very aware of what's showing. So again, we don't jeopardize the investigation, those types of things.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And I think it's really important to get this information into our citizens' hands because the biggest impact that I have seen, and I take it to the street right now, where we used to have a lot of issues, whether it was code issues, criminal issues, it was rental property, and you spoke that to the landlord. And once the community started putting pressure, not on, because we were working hand-in-hand trying to do what we do, but once they started putting pressure on the landlord, those places have changed completely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Because I like, because I like an interesting call from a contractor who said, yeah, that you can go online and find out how much the city pays somebody. Well, I didn't know that. And I said, well, if you did, you have to. And he said, well, I didn't know everybody was going to know. Now that's when you deal with the city, you can find it pretty easily. All right, well, let's look at this, this is Kate. Can sit down?
Close that.
This witness is, she joined us several weeks ago, but was there outside of the office. But it's, I think it got a little, little dicier in the building. I think we moved her around a little bit and maybe some time. She's just now, we're going to have to do an introduction of herself and what she's going to be doing for the city, but it's been on board in at least six or eight weeks at this point. So welcome, even though it's belated. Thank you for joining us this evening and giving us some information about our new neighborhood services program.
Good evening, Council. I'm excited to be here. My name is Kate Chazito and as Mayor Danner said, I'm the Neighborhood Services Coordinator. Originally, I had intended on starting off this presentation with a story of people being neighborly and how, highlight how that impacted the city and the city's health. But with COVID-19 going on, our news is flooded with these kinds of stories. And we can all think of an example. One I'd like to highlight is this idea of the bear hut. We've all seen something like this in the news. Neighbors going out of their way to make sure that people are staying connected. What is more interesting to this, about this story to me is how much its spotlight has made on the importance of being neighborly and how it impacts our city, neighborhood health, and even our physical health. But I started to think, why? Why is this story of people interacting with their own neighbors so heartwarming? Why is this such a revolutionary idea that has now spanned the globe to have a passive way to interact with your neighbors? And the answer I keep coming back to is this cultural shift that has been happening over the past few generations, where the center of our social lives is no longer in our neighborhoods or in our local community. We've begun to drive to distant restaurants, churches, you name it, that are no longer local. And this social distancing, if you will, has had a direct impact in how we see the community around us. This shift has created quite a dilemma. As a culture, we've become so frightened and wary of others and assuming the worst and strangers. I mean, really, how can we ask someone to love the community they're in if they're constantly waiting for their new neighbor to knock on their door, axe in toe? Maybe we've watched too many horror movies or maybe we've let irrational fear turn into an irrational terror. We can all think of examples of this fear, whether it be parents not accepting wrapped candies on Halloween or anything you can fill in the blank with, you just don't know these days, you can never be too safe. It's the same distancing that has stopped neighbors from hashing out their disagreements over backyard fences. This lack of communication, of listening to someone else's perspective, has deepened the divide and left our local politicians between a rock and a hard place on a lot of hot button issues. Perhaps the most important dilemma of all is what this is, the impact this is having on our health. We all know that noise, traffic, and pollution have negative impacts on our health. But studies show that neighborhoods where there's no neighborly feel are more likely to die from stress-related illnesses or develop those underlying health conditions we keep hearing about. So in a day and age where the average American moves 11 times, one in three have no interaction with their neighbor, one in two can't tell you the name of one person who lives on their block, and even State Farm has stopped saying like a good neighbor because it no longer resonates. How do we as a city address this? A study over the past 50 years has shown this idea of neighborhood efficacy or the extent in which our residents are involved enough, connected enough, empowered enough to not only see an issue in the neighborhood, but actively work to change it. The study of neighborliness has been replicated all around the world in different cultures, income levels, you name it. And what it really shows is when you narrow it down to a neighborhood in a city, the deciding factor that affects everything from foreclosures, health, mental health, infant mortality, crime, neighborhood blight, all the way down to if your neighbor would return your mail if it's lost, is this idea of neighborliness and how connected each, the neighbors are to each other and to their local resources. It really drives home the importance of having a person in each community that can rally those around them and the need for them to be connected with other local leaders and the local government. I'd like to take a minute to bring this down to the career level. With Madeline's help, along with code enforcement, PD, and the fire, we have created that map that we alluded to earlier. So if you see the colorful dots on there are the code enforcement violations that she showed you earlier. And the blue to red, purple fading is a heat map from the 911 dispatch, whether it be police going out, fire, EMS, those kind of 911 calls. And what you can see is that these issues affect every neighborhood, every district. But what I do know is that there's somebody in each neighborhood already there that wants to see that neighborhood thrive and is already invested. So once we can start recognizing these leaders, we can start to draw the lines of how they're connected. We can physically map out this social network, if you will. We can start to literally draw a safety net being formed over our community. And I can recognize the gaps and fill the needs with our Neighborhood Services. One last interesting fact from the study that's been going on over the last half a century is that they followed these same neighborhoods through the Great Recession of '08. And what they found was the financial stability and the recovery of each neighborhood is directly related to the connectivity of the neighborhood, so how connected they were to each other and their local resources. So knowing all of this, I think that Neighborhood Services are more important than ever. Neighborhood Services is defined as helping to form a partnership between our neighborhood residents, the business community, local government, and local governments continue to make Greer a great place to live, work, and play through programs, training, and support. These partnerships encourage responsible homeownership, provide the means of revitalizing neighborhoods, support community pride, and develop personal empowerment. I know that these are really big topics and really big issues that we'd all like to see happen. So I've kind of narrowed it down to my perspective of how I'm going to see this done and to four priority lists. The first one is engaging our community leaders. There has to be this two-way communication from our community so that they have access to information and they know who to call when they have an issue and that we can also receive those issues as they're happening and respond in real time. Normally, I would start doing, addressing and engaging our community leaders by physically going out boots on the ground in our neighborhoods, knocking on doors, going to neighborhood meetings, getting to know our neighborhoods that way. But since the COVID-19 pandemic, I've had to be a little more creative. With our communications team, we have started reaching out online. And you guys may have seen this over the past few weeks, a couple of examples I'll show you. This first one is a graphic that just tells you who to call if you have an issue. It removes one of those barriers of not knowing who's the correct person to contact and having that connectivity with our city. The next one is this introductory video that Taylor made for me and Neighborhood Services, and I'll let you watch that now.
Great question, speaking of property, and making the city drive to the next generation, that might get to people up in their neighborhood. My name is Kate Chazito, and I'm the Neighborhood Services Coordinator for the City of Greer. During the Thursday, we're super excited about our initiative, the Neighborhood Fund, that will help you to your neighbors. One of the most exciting parts of my job is doing work with our local leaders because there are people in this place that love that they can and want to be a pride. Of course, I'd like to. Unfortunately, they're so disconnected from their resources that they don't know where to start, so to find out would be that hard and tough to help them to build resources. So if you're someone who lives in Greer and has a resident in our local neighborhood, I would love to connect with you. It doesn't matter where you're from, there's always room for improvement. So if you are in the Greer area and you'd like to see something that interests your neighbors, please try to ask me. I care to help you. For all of us here, there are various relationships that people are today. So for someone in Greer, there's nothing more important to me than to see who's the best place to live, work, and play.
It's my hope by having this opportunity to connect with people online before I start meeting face-to-face and shaking hands, that the transition of going into our physical neighborhoods will be a smooth one. The next thing on my priority list would be to train up those local leaders, and one way I envision doing this is through the Civics Academy, and again, another little short video here of a promotional kind of commercial for you of what that is going to be. Just a summary of what you just saw. The Civics Academy is a free six-week course that'll meet once a week for two hours and is devoted to giving every resident that participates direct access and knowledge to each department we have in the city. The Civics Academy, I really see as being a resource for our local leaders and our local business owners to not only learn their answers to their questions, but directly connect with people in their community, whether it be the local police officer, fireman, code enforcement officer, or their council member. This enables them to take this information back to their neighborhoods, so I don't have to physically knock on every single door and give them that information, and it also gives them the power to say when something is going on, I know who to call. One good thing that has come from the pandemic is that we have been able to digitize a lot of this information, and you'll start to see these kind of 90-second brief intro videos coming out about issues that may happen in the city and how to stay better connected. Next on my priority list is organizing neighborhood associations. Neighborhood associations have real value, and I put up a few reasons for them. They empower residents to have a unified voice affecting their neighborhoods. They build stronger relationships and pride among neighbors. They establish neighborhood leaders, and they also establish that partnership with the city of Greer. They can receive notifications of special events, public meetings, services, and programs, and receive notices of land issues, i.e. rezoning within their neighborhood boundaries. Some things that I can either coordinate for them or connect resources I can connect them to to keep them active are crime prevention education, fire prevention, neighborhood improvement projects, financial empowerment coaches, neighborhood cleanup kits, and first-time home buyer education. And once, the goal is, once the neighborhoods are organized and active, is to create this thing called the Council of Neighbors. The Council of Neighbors would be a biannual meeting of community leaders hosted by Neighborhood Services where leaders can get together, share ideas, resources, do's and don'ts of projects, and ultimately, we, where we weave that safety net that I alluded to earlier. And as Mayor Daner said before, I've only been here a short time, basically since the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic has started, but the community has had a lot of positive feedback, and I thought I'd share a little bit of that with you today. Oops. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Madeline and GIS and Taylor and Communications and Liz Adams for all the help that they've given me in putting together this presentation, and to all of Team Greer for making this program a success. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Yes, first of all. Are you fine? And I think you just hit the start. And I think we talked about there being kind of disconnect between some of the neighborhoods. Like, we have some neighborhoods that are highly connected because they have high neighborhoods associations, and then there's others over the years that doesn't fall by the wayside, and they just kind of fall connected. Do you find you probably spend a lot more of your time in the neighborhoods that are older, more established, and don't have the associations?
Well, I'm going to pull up the GIS map for you guys to look at. So I think you can, if I could zoom in, as I started talking about that safety net that could be created, we can also start to, I guess I should look at the screen. And we turn on those other heat maps. You can kind of see the areas that need the most help, and so that's where I would start to focus my attention. But as you see, the neighborhoods in green are actually neighborhoods that have already reached out to me, so it's about, I have about 58 in total that have reached out, and so those are ones that I can give services to as well. So as I'm reaching out to these neighborhoods that might not be so connected, the ones that are connected are going to be streamlined into those resources.
The Civics Academy was very trained to make, you can tell us a little more about that, but that's just conceptual at this point with the specific ones, aren't they?
Yeah, so I have developed the curriculum for it. It was originally envisioned to be an in-person kind of academy. Right now, we're looking at a webinar version, which is why we've been able to make these videos and introductory videos. So we do see that rolling out before the end of summer, or before fall at least, kind of transitioning into that fall time online, and then in person whenever we can meet with between six feet.
We're going to have a pilot project with staff to, so we can launch an entire curriculum program, and then once we run through the framework for how to introduce it to the community. We would envision, we would imagine that we will get more requests for participation in Greer community than we really are able to accommodate, but we will continue to keep pulling those classes. Ultimately, the intent is for us to develop community leaders that will take responsibility and assist in getting information and assistance for their neighborhoods to us. This is really an incubator program for us to help identify people to get moves on their own to get more of them.
Has this been successfully done in other cities?
I mean, I'm going to, I'm really going to go out on a limb here and say, I have seen this in many communities. I don't know that I've seen a startup of a program like this with the passion and zeal that Kate is bringing to this. I think that in itself is going to spark pretty rapid participation for us, and as is the typical Greer way, we're taking some things that other folks have not okay, and we're making those into pretty great opportunities.
Awesome opportunity. Thank you for running and starting a little bit of time in the area for us with the things that you're going to pull together for us and look forward to. Hopefully, you're getting, getting ahead and get out some this summer and in some of our communities and actually, thank you.
Thank you.
First, I believe your report is next, sir.
Well, you know, we've brought in these talented young folks that run up GIS programs, our neighborhood programs, and they've developed these wonderful, nice videos and all that. I've got a couple pages of plays I need to read today. So we are so proud of our staff. We have folks that are truly on the cutting edge of being able to provide remarkable services in our community, and those resources are provided to us generously by you. You allow us to be able to use the resources that we have to look at you in adventurous ways that we can do you in adventurous things. And I just wanted to say thank you, as we start to introduce some of those to you this evening. A couple of things that we do have going on, as I continue to report to you over the last several weeks, we've held in a different format, or in a Zoom format, so much of our time, at least in this quarter, so much of our time has been dedicated and devoted to response to our COVID-19 situation in our own community. We continue to monitor those things that we think are appropriate for us as a community, following guidelines and directions being provided to us by our governor's office, as well as looking at recommendations and guidelines from our CDC. And that's still the case for us. Some of those, as I've always reported, is still requiring that we be a bit fluid, and so I wanted to make sure that you were aware, as I previously reported to you, our desire was for us to open our lobbies beginning today, and we were not permitted to be able to do that. And so I wanted to make you aware that we have to lay that until next Monday, June 1st. We needed to, we needed to get installed some additional personal protective equipment, PPE, at appropriate places, because you see some examples of that on the desk this evening. We are individually packaging masks, gloves, those types of things in our lobby areas. We're installing sneeze guards at all of those windows, putting up barriers for the protection of our employees and the general public as well, and establishing social distancing markers within all of those places as well. We were concerned that all of our work could not be satisfactory completed prior to today, so I needed to make a decision last week to postpone that. It gives us four additional days to make sure all of our equipment is indeed in place. I think we only really have one incident today that someone came and said, "Well, I understood that the office was going to be back open today, I can do business." We were able to assist that person outside of the logging area and be able to take care of that business. We want to assure you that the business of the city is being attended to. Everything that we have been able to do in our lobbies, we have been and continue to be able to provide those levels of services to our community, to our contractors, to our residents, through either remote, or they can make it go online in one of us, our contract system, by telephone, by Zoom, all of those things continue to be able to allow us to accommodate those things that we continue to be providing. We had hoped to have those lobbies open today, but again, we felt it was necessary for us to make sure that everything was in place, and a file communication to our employees that I'll be sending out tomorrow with all our team detailing how we are, how we are doing things, what protocols are still in place for us, what protocols may have been lifted or lightened for us as we continue to move forward. And we continue to have those discussions here at County Governor as well. So I wanted to make you aware of that slight alteration that we did make as we get going, but we're ready to go, and we feel confident we're going to make that deadline next week, as well as other entities in our area are choosing that date as well. It isn't like following someone else doesn't necessarily hire intent, it just doesn't exist that way, but many of us are hoping the government will say this Monday, June 1st. I had an opportunity to share with you previously some concerns that we've had relative to some of our recreation programs. One of the things that we have said all along is that our desire is to make sure we are compliant with executive orders from our governor, as well as following recommended guidelines from our CDC. One of those, especially for protection of children in our community, involved our participation, our leadership in providing summer camp programs here within the community. We typically have about 100 children that have participated in that program, and we do that in our existing facilities. As we evaluated our ability to be able to meet the guidelines, the social distancing guidelines, and the recommendations and requirements that are placed for us here again, through executive order by our state or by those recommendations from the CDC, we quickly realized that we could not ensure for every parent that would have a child in our program that we could meet all of those guidelines. And because of that, we felt that it was necessary that we would suspend that program this summer. It's a program that we've held for many, many years, providing summer camp programs, and we're always excited to be able to do that, but to be able to ensure to a parent that we were providing to them at the level that is recommended, we did not believe that we could use that as satisfactory, in fact, satisfactory this summer, and so a decision needed to be made that we would not be able to do those, we would suspend that for this year, and we certainly will begin immediately our process of getting that program again in summer of 2021, but we were unable to move forward that program. We're in the process now of reaching out and notifying our parents of that decision so that appropriate alternative measures can be made for those families involved. Couple of the other things that are larger scale for us that's given us great concern as we move forward is the, our annual Freedom Blast event that we hold every year on the last Saturday of June, scheduled this year for June 27th. We have issued contracts for that program. We typically would anticipate here on our grounds that we would have about 15,000 folks that attendance during the day are participating in various ways of that program, and we know that most of that takes place here on the grounds of City Park. Again, we did not see that there was any measure that we could comply with that is provided for appropriate distanci, for that type of an event, and so we do find it necessary that we would, again, that we would postpone that event. We don't want to, we don't want to indicate it's not so an event because we have plans to come back and pick up those events in different types of ways as we continue to move forward. This is an annual celebration to recognize the men and women of our armed forces in our land community. It's a way for us to celebrate achievements and service that services have provided to us in the past. We are committed to that, and we will find creative ways to do that as we move forward, but we do not believe that it is feasible for us or practical for us to try to assemble that large crowd in the spaces that we have available to us as a community. So we do find it necessary that we will not postpone that event on June 27th. And of course, immediately on the heels of that was our participation, our great participation of being able to open our Streetscape project, Synergy. That project is, again, on schedule, and we're moving forward for June 30th completion. We have hoped to celebrate that in a large fashion at a festival environment on July 10th. We do not believe that it is feasible for us to be able to do that in the current time. If we were to have a plan for that now and moving forward, we have not issued contracts for entertainment or for special events for that particular, that particular outdoor event, and so we thought it would be appropriate that we go ahead and notify the potential vendors that it wasn't appropriate for us to move forward at this time. But again, we are committed, and we will hold in reserve the resources that we've placed to be able to hold both Freedom Blast and our Synergy dedication, that we will do those another time. We are going to make sure that we as a community get to celebrate recognizing our service of military personnel in our community and the achievements and the uniqueness of our Synergy program. We're just going to have to do that a little bit later and possibly in a little bit different fashion, but we wanted to make sure that we're providing our community with our full capacity. Alternatively, we do think that it's still important for us to be able to, let's say, cut the ribbon and dedicate our Streetscape project as we roll out of that. I have a task, Elizabeth Adams, Elizabeth Adams, and also the team within our Parks and Recreation Department, our events team. We will We will be looking at an alternative on a smaller scale that will involve our downtown merchants and, of course, our elected officials and key personnel. But instead of us looking at a event that draws anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 people into that downtown space, we're going to do something on a much, much smaller scale, much more of a private event involving, again, our downtown merchants and people that have been involved in this project. We'll do that as a ribbon cutting as a dedication, and that'll just be a, it'll be a stepping stone, a jump off point for us as we would come in and do a larger event. Hopefully, you know, we would certainly hope that in the fall we'll give us opportunity to do some things that maybe this summer we cannot do. But again, we'll hold those resources and reserve so that things that we have hoped to do now, that we'll be able to do just a little bit later. I wanted to make you aware of those things. But the good news is that as we continue to move forward, we're also in a position to continue moving through the phases of opening some of our parks, facilities, our national parks themselves, and our playgrounds. Having met with Ms. Cunningham earlier today, she is confident, and I am encouraged with her assessment of that, that we are in a position and prepared beginning next week to start that process of opening all of our parks and recreation facilities. That will also include playgrounds, and so we will have very structured schedules for sanitizing buildings, equipment, those types of things. We will have signage in all of those areas indicating that social distancing is recommended and is encouraged so that we are trying to get voluntary compliance with our community as we continue to open those. And so obviously, we can't do it all on a day, we're beginning next week. We will be in the process. We would hope to start that here at City Park first, where you'll start seeing benches open, you'll start to see that the amphitheater will be open, that we can start reintroducing people into our facilities, but again, doing that in an environment that encourages recreation, but not necessarily gathering. And so we will, we will be working in a way to try to accommodate that to the best of our ability. Under provisions of our state order, we are still not in that position to do organized play. Right now, the governor's order still says that that is through June 15th. And so we will wait to see if indeed that ban is lifted or is modified, but organized play in our recreation programs, those will not be rescheduled until we get further direction from the governor's office on how we can proceed with doing that as well. We are reopening our event centers for private events, but we are, we have recalculated all of our spaces and all of our facilities, and we are advising folks that have facilities rented, scheduled to be used, that we are ordered, that those have to be in 50% capacity. And so we're making provisions for that. So as an example of that, we may have, we may have a group that rented Hall B, a city hall for an event, but we do not have a rental in Hall B or Hall C. Their event may call for 50 people to attend their event. Under our guidelines, 50%, they could not get 50 people into Hall B. If we're not renting in our other spaces, we're opening up additional space so that they can continue to do that, doing that no additional charge, so that people can start to resume as much normal activity as we can accommodate, and then trying to adhere to giving the distancing that is recommended. So wanted to make you aware that we are moving forward with those things. We will continue to see that as modifications and recommendations are made to us, both by the state and your CDC, we will continue to make modifications in how we operate moving forward. We're trying to be very careful not to set absolute dates for things, but as we are prepared to start opening and expanding and doing more, then we naturally are able to do those things. Certainly, I will answer any questions that you may have. This is a continuation of discussions that I continue to have with you as we spend the ongoing process. Wanted to get that information out to more in public form so that our community knows how we're moving forward, at least over the next 30 to 60 days, with things that we know, and of course, giving us flexibility to make adjustments for that as we move forward.
We have a few policies and procedures starting next week that you're going to communicate with the board if you copy that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Anything else? Just record all bases available for additional information. Council, those who want to support the missions far too deep, but on a written basis that some of those missions will be in June with our fiscal year, since we will see a number of positions that are down, though that will be in June, as you guys will want to try to do some of those decisions regarding to the city's department. Speaking of which, the board of architecture review, Mr. Hanen's position is a position that goes to expire six thirty twenty twenty two, or is six thirty twenty twenty? In regards to either or, whether it is, you might hand you that information in regards to the board of architecture review.
Yes, sir. For Mr. Hanen's position, staff would like to recommend Betsy Potter. She is a local resident in the Brushy Meadows subdivision, but she owns several businesses downtown. She has a real big desire to keep the downtown looking historic, and we would just like to bring that to you for your consideration.
We're going to take that as a motion. We're going to take that as a motion for a motion. We will adjourn the motion to exempt this department to, as this do fulfill his term or is this for a new term?
This would be to fulfill his term and for the new term.
Should he be appointed immediately with a term expiring June 30th, 2023?
Okay. All right. I have a motion to second any further discussion, President.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford, yes. Mayor Danner?
Yes. Any information in regards to Ms. Woods?
Yes, sir. Our staff has spoken with Ms. Woods, and she would like to continue to serve if it's council's desire.
Council, refer to the nation's staff on taking the seat.
Yes, sir, she has.
Have a motion to second any further discussion of questions, Mr. McHann at this time.
Just for clarification, that we will reappoint him through June 30th, 2023.
Hearing, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford, yes. Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, in the Board of zoning appeals, you will notice that Districts 1, 3, and 6 all have positions that will need to be filled by the end of June. The recommendations can come back to you by the council. Forward of the zoning appeals, Mr. McHann, do you require there to be additional information in regards to that?
Mr. Mayor, I have District 1, Emily, I really won't need to say that name. It's Emily Chesmello-Glue. Okay. She has done a great job for us. Staff concurs, and so I'd like to nominate her to continue service.
Counsel, please, a little bit, a second.
Second.
Any additional conversation in regard to questions, Mr. Arrowood? Hearing, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford, yes. Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I was just informed before the meeting, actually, I believe Mr. McHann has spoken to Mr. McAfee, and he would like to rotate off, and so I will be starting that session. In District 6?
I did speak with Steve Griffin, and he expressed his desire to serve under the term, so I'd like to.
Counsel, please, a little bit, a second. Have a motion, a second. Questions, is that? Hearing, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford, yes. Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, the critical sparkler in National Airport Environment Planning Commission has a term that the expired miles Mason has served as the partner of county representative. We had a partner with county representative as well as a crew member of county representative. I believe in the task that we have taken information in regards to people that they won't continue service in that regard, and I have spoken to some of the nominees in the past. I see, Mr. McHann, back to the podium, is that in regards to the proposition you had with Mr. Nason?
We have not spoken directly with Mr. Nason ourselves. We have spoken with the airport district, and they do recommend keeping him on. He is the chair, I believe, for the environs committee.
He is the current chair, the recommendation. Counsel, please.
Okay, counsel, with your approval, I would not let you resume the board again. Planning Commission, District 1, Holland, term by August, is that aware of that?
Yes, sir, which Buckminster Holland, he's done a great job. He actually chairs that committee right now, our commission, and would like to serve again, and I'd like to recommend that we reappoint him for another.
Counsel, a motion, a little bit, a second. A second. Have a motion, a second. Questions, Mr. Arrowood? Comments?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford, yes. Mayor Danner?
Yes.
And District 3, Mr. Harper, I believe you've got some run fill, Jersey, on the planning commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I emailed counsel earlier today, was recently brought to my attention District 3 resident, Mr. Tom Creasy. Mr. Creasy has lived in the city for seven years, has a number of different experiences and qualifications that make him a productive member of the planning commission, very enthusiastic about what's going on in career, has a desire to serve in a greater way, and very excited about this possibility as well. So I'd like to make a motion to nominate him to serve as the District 3 resident representative on planning commission.
Second.
A question, a second, in regard to any questions, Mr. Harper's nominee?
For clarification, is that to fill the unexpired term through June 30th, 2021? Then obviously, we'd have a good one.
That is what I would make the motion is to fulfill the rest of the term.
All right, we'll need to leave that on the agenda for one of the June meetings, one that's in the table.
If the vacancy exists now, the field--
A second, to fill the third days of the year?
Well, it's 2021. It's a year.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, and a second, in regard to clarification, others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford, yes. Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we've dialed two businesses seeking further coverage via a statement request from Bond Center, by fighting constructor Chris Harvey with Bond's Career Center, requesting a donation of a Ford Ranger pickup truck from the rear fighter department to Bond's Career Center. Mr. Harvey, do you have any good information in that regard?
Yes, sir. Former RG Chris Harvey that we are all familiar with, and his efforts for training new firefighters at the Bond's Career Center has identified that we have a surplus piece of equipment, that Ford Ranger pickup truck that we would send over to GovDeals for auction. He has requested that the city consider donating that vehicle to the Bond's Center. Of course, they don't have responsibility for maintenance, upkeep, insurance, we would simply be making the donation to the inverse of selling the vehicle on the other end. Left from Franchise, former Franchise Harvey is continuing to package that to the other place. It would be our recommendation.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll have a motion.
Second.
Second.
And Mr. Harvey, this small pickup truck never had any equipment, because this is a service truck, it's a vehicle, so maybe they didn't have equipment, or did?
This vehicle was the vehicle that they used between stations, and of course, any equipment, there's no firefighting.
So this vehicle was, I mean, it is very neat, it turns, it didn't--
I'll be speaking out, Tom, it may have had some Russian.
Others?
If there's an airline that's now, it had some radio or something.
So you should get a tour.
It's rated.
It's rated.
That's been pretty hard to figure out, it's a part of my thinking earlier, yeah.
We got, sir?
How do we see it, sir?
Do we know the approximate value of the vehicle?
Um, I do know, I do know.
Two thousand eight model.
Two thousand eight. Now? Others?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we've got a third report, this number 23, January 20th, this endorse change consented by the station according to property, WC Z, Del Westley, located in the price from R will to E R D. Mr. McHann, information in that regard?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. This is a rezonant of a portion of a parcel at 300 Tryon Street to DRD. This is kind of the aerial view of the property. This is the current zoning, showing the property is currently zoned R12 with C3 directly across from it. The property is located in a transit oriented corridor. This is the proposed site plan, it is basically lot B. It is roughly 6,500 square foot lot that they are wanting to do with setbacks of 10 feet along the front, seven on the sides, and five on the rear. The proposal is to build a 1,800 square foot single family house on this property. This went to planning commission last month, and they recommended approval, but I can answer any questions that you may have.
I shall look into the end of these properties, the end of these properties this evening. I want to have a motion received. So I have a question, Mr. Harper, a second.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, for the discussion, questions? Can you go back to the matter?
Yes, sir.
This, okay, so that's across Wade Hampton.
Yes, sir. Oh, what did I hit? Okay, wrong button, apologize. Here's Wade Hampton, I believe this is where the little Applebee's is right here, and that strip mall is right there. It's that very first road.